All right, well, we've got everyone here. Greetings, everyone, and welcome to the Monroe County Council December Work Session Meeting. It is 5:32 PM on Tuesday, December 22, 2020, and we're called to order. Appreciate all of you being here on this week of vacations and cooking and baking and all sorts of holiday preparations that are taking place right now. So we do have a full agenda tonight, which actually kind of resembles more of a regular session meeting. But we'll need to take action on several of these items before the new year. And well, this is our last opportunity to do that. So that's actually some very positive news for us, though, that this is indeed our final meeting of the county council for the year of 2020. And I would imagine there are some who probably think that that's about the most worthwhile thing. I've said all year in these meetings. So I'll just reiterate it one more time here because it's very satisfying to say that this year, 2020, is almost over, just a few days left here, and will be done with 2020. And that's something I think we can all appreciate right now as we look forward to brighter days ahead. But first, let's get through this meeting tonight. So at this time, I'll do a roll call of council members present this evening. Council members, please unmute your mics as I call the roll and indicate by voice that you're present. Councilmember Deckard.
Here.
Councilmember Hawk.
Here.
Councilmember Iverson.
Here.
Councilmember McKim.
Here.
Councilmember Munson.
Here.
Councilmember Wiltz.
Here.
All right, we've got everyone here accounted for. So we will move on to our next item on the agenda. And item number two is actually a mistake. We do not, I should have caught this, and I apologize for adding it on the agenda of the council liaison updates. We do those, the intent is for those to be during the regular session. So if there's anybody that has a, do we have any liaison reports? I don't believe so. If there's anything that would be useful, we can save our, the time at the end of the meeting during the council comments for that. So now we'll move on to item three, which is a presentation from United Way of Monroe County on the COVID Relief Fund. And we have our good friend and partner, Ephraim Pfefferman, who is the executive director of United Way Monroe County here this evening, and will give us a presentation on the status of the COVID Relief Fund, which I know we're all interested in.
Hi, everyone. Thanks so much for having me here this evening. It's great to see all of you.
Welcome.
Yeah, thank you. Let me see if I can screen share. I've got a little presentation I pulled together. And we'll get the slideshow going on that. Can y'all see that?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Yeah, it seemed like a good time to come back to the county council and report on the activities of the COVID Relief Fund of the past, my gosh, how many months has it been? Eight? The county was there at the start, helping to launch this partnership. And so I'll talk about that and talk about some of the work we've done. And then see if you have any questions. I did a quick overview of United Way of Monroe County, just for those who may not be as familiar. Our mission statement is to mobilize the caring power of our community in order to address critical needs, essentially. And the caring power of our community, I think people often think of as dollars. That's certainly true, but it's also volunteerism and advocacy. When you have all three of those things together, we can solve problems a whole lot better. We serve Monroe, Owen, and Green Counties. I wanted to highlight that. So we do have a regional footprint. And, you know, to talk just a minute about the history, because I think it's interesting, especially in this year of the pandemic. The model was actually born out of a crisis in our, about 140 years ago, as the economy was transitioning to a more industrial one, and cities were springing up, and people were leaving their tight-knit rural communities to go in search of opportunities. And so, you know, they'd end up at these cities in factories or whatever. And with that came unanticipated problems because they're separated from their safety nets of those communities and maybe churches or, you know, families. So what happens if you're now a guy in Denver, and you get injured on the job? Or maybe you have a child and something happens to you and they're orphaned. There were all these charities springing up to attend to these new needs, soup kitchens, orphanages, things like that. But there wasn't any coordination of that and no way to really, you know, verify if these charities were operating with integrity and actually solving problems and helping people, or if they were just maybe bilking people out of money. So in Denver, the community came together to agree that there needed to be a coordinating body. And the idea of United Way emerged there and quickly spread throughout the country. And, you know, here in Monroe County, our roots date back to that concept in the early 1900s. We had a council of social agencies. The name Mary Waldron that you may know is affiliated with that. Eventually had a community chess to help with the fundraising piece of things. The community chess sort of turned into the United Fund. And then eventually we changed into United Way. So we are affiliated with the organization that's now worldwide, but we are a dependent, you know, entity that addresses local needs. So the larger organization, we get the brand, we get a lot of resources and support. We pay a small amount of dues in exchange for that. And we get a network to learn from and connect with. Here in Monroe County, we have our ongoing partnerships with member agencies, and those are the ones supported through our annual drive. They each provide critical services in health, education, financial, the safety net. And it's a group that meets regularly. It's a group that gets a monthly unrestricted allocation from us. And, you know, we do a certification process to make sure that they're all meeting high standards for nonprofits and so forth. We also round that out with initiatives that are responsive to the changing needs. That may be disaster relief, such as when we had floods or tornadoes. The Financial Stability Alliance brings partners together around the table to do a lot of good work supporting people who are economically challenged. With that, the Free Community Tax Service, you may have heard about. We have some reading programs and early learning programs. And then the Wake Up With United Way Speaker Series. So talking about changing needs and things that you can't necessarily anticipate. You know, it was late February, early March, when we started hearing concerns from our partner agencies about COVID and its impact. They were starting to think they may have to cancel fundraisers that they rely on for their operating budgets. They were concerned about having to expend more on hygiene, on sanitation needs. We convened some meetings and heard these concerns and realized we had to do something to support this nonprofits, the ones that are serving people, especially in our community. And I think at that point, we were still thinking it was going to be like, you know, they need some extra hand sanitizer and face masks and, you know, maybe a little revenue. But it obviously quickly turned into something a lot bigger than any of us imagined, right? So March 16, we activated our relief fund with the help of partners. The key partners were Monroe County, who said yes right away to $25,000, along with you, the city was there, the Bloomington Township and Perry Township, the Community Foundation and the Bloomington Health Foundation. So when we launched it, we had about a quarter of a million to announce, and that really generated the community to start giving, you know, businesses, individuals, clubs, all came together. But we couldn't have done it without that early partnership. And along with that partnership and along with the county's support and partnership, we launched the COVID Coalition with the Chamber of Commerce and the BDC and the Bloomington Health Foundation. That's a group that started meeting in March. We were, I think we were meeting twice a week. Now we're down every other week. But bringing together all the different sectors in the community to just exchange information on what we're doing, what we're all doing, what we can do together, you know, get updates from each other. So that's been a really critical piece of all this, too. With that momentum, I think that's what helped us be a successful applicant to the Lilly Endowment for our $1.2 million grant that we got in April because they saw the coordination in our community and the work we had begun doing. So we had raised to date over 1.6 million in our community and actually recently had granted most of that out in four different phases. The Grant Review Committee included key partners from that group that worked together initially. And so we've got Commissioner Jones from the county, Beverly Calender Anderson from the city, Tina Peterson from the Community Foundation, John Berada, who was with the Bloomington Health Foundation, and then David Johnson from IU are all on the committee that has reviewed these applications in each phase and made the decisions on where to direct these resources. And yeah, just to reiterate a big thank you to the partners who really helped launch this. We, you know, it takes all of us. And if you want to see the full list of businesses and partners, it's on our website at monroeyunitedway.org. The first phase, so this was March, we had that quarter of a million. We kept getting donations in, and we wanted to get it out the door as soon as possible, knowing these agencies were struggling and overwhelmed. So we focused on the basic needs. We focused on sustaining their operation. They were, you know, another challenge was they were lost all their volunteers. IU and things shut down, and every nonprofit said, okay, we can't, we can't take volunteers coming in right now. Neither did volunteers want to come in back then. So some of them wanted to, needed to hire staff to compensate for that. We were also concerned about some broad needs. One was our food security system. And I know, you know, in conversations with all of you, you were too. You gave a lot to the food bank, did too. And I think, I think we all did right in doing that because the supply chain was really out of whack. And the food bank was concerned that even if they had orders, they wouldn't get them all in time. So they wanted to really get on top of it, and they did. The other concern was we have a few shelters of different sizes in our community, and none of them are equipped to let someone self-isolate or quarantine. And so that group came together and talked about the need for that isolation shelter. And United Way was able to help fund that before it got some additional funding from the state to get that going. Really, in a matter of, I credit those providers, especially New Hope for Families and Shalom, now Beacon, along with Middleway House and Wheeler and the Health Department and the city's departments for all coming together to make that happen. So you can see a big focus in that phase was food security and shelter, but there were other things in the mix, too. And we learned a lot from that phase about what the agencies were dealing with. And I think that was instructive, you know, in moving forward. I won't read all this, but let you look at it for a minute. Phase two was expanded a little to address those needs from phase one. But by now, we were also looking at, you know, childcare for essential workers especially, and partners like the Boys and Girls Club were looking at safe ways to do that, as well as health and personal safety of individuals, especially as systems of care disrupted. If you think about, you know, kids home without the school counselors seeing them or, you know, just people without their coworkers there to check on them. Now, now we're seeing the increase in demand for mental health services being really pronounced as people have been dealing with all this for so many months. But we were seeing it then, too, and, you know, invested in things like technology for mental health services so that they could do things remotely. Additional, you know, supports for Middleway House and the providers that serve people with substance disorder. Now, like, maybe we're laid off from their jobs, and they were in the facility more and needed, you know, more attention and more programming. So a lot of that work fell into that category. But we gave the food bank another big round then, as well as some of the local food pantries. Financial assistance. There were a few agencies with really vulnerable populations, like El Centro Comunal and the Bloomington Refugee Network, who were really concerned about the families that they support. And we were able to help them in most of the phases here. Phase three, we, so we were shifting to the longer-term picture. And, you know, in reflection, I think we were thinking this would all be wrapped up, you know, by September. And maybe needed to keep articulating the basics, the basic needs. But the basic needs certainly were all in here and prioritized. Just the language and the framework shifted a little bit. And we also wanted to add that component of racial justice and economic justice, you know, given things that were coming to light in our community and others. And so this phase focused on building resilience, included grants to agencies that wanted to tackle anti-racism training or implicit bias training, things like that, as it supported their mission and their work. So there was a little bit of that in there, but still a lot of individual basic needs and the safety net in here. And phase four kept that same framework. So I'll move on to a more summary level of things. Overall, we funded 45 different organizations throughout the four phases of the relief fund, total of almost $1.6 million. I included some testimonials here and pictures, just so you could see some things. There's the telehealth services being offered by charities. Their demand really skyrocketed in recent months. And they also stepped up to serve the frontline workers at these nonprofits that were also just under a lot of, and, you know, dealing with some really tough situations. There's food for the food bank, there's diapers for the All Options Resource Center. Area 10 on agency on aging received several grants to maintain their levels of service without volunteers and to offer transportation for people's medical appointments and other things. Partners like St. Vincent de Paul, they deal with a lot of direct assistance to families. And we supported them, Meals on Wheels, Designs, you know. So again, people who, their clients were used to being able to go out and access things in the community, and then that got all taken away. So they're trying to figure out how to better serve them while things were shut down. There's the whole list, if you want to take that. I'll speak to the community foundations real quick as you do that. Part of the Lilly Grant was to make sure that we do support Monroe, Owen, and actually a small sliver of Brown out because it's such a tiny sliver. It doesn't even include Nashville. But rather than administering those ourselves, we partnered with those community foundations, and they held those grant processes for their counties. They know their communities, they know the priorities and the needs. They were different in each county, and so that's how that was all handled. We kind of turned it over and they did their thing. So that's why you see Green County and Owen County and Brown County in there. And then the community founded here, we supported a round of rapid response grants and an investment into their Learn Fund for Technology. Moving forward, so I think I have some slides in here that define these areas a little more. You know, what are we talking about when we're talking about resilient individuals? So this was the focus of phase three and phase four and is the focus for our ongoing partnerships for the next three years. So you can see what types of under that individuals on the community level, and then the safety net. So we have some continued work to do with COVID relief and recovery work. The coalition still actively meets, still right in the thick of it. Donations do keep coming in, and whatever we get, we're going to turn around and grant out. And we, you know, there are also a couple of grant opportunities we've applied for to support this work. So that continues. I mentioned the updated framework for our partnerships. That will be implemented as we're kind of reworking our processes to streamline some things in terms of the application process and the reporting process for them. So that's really jazzy, but it's important and it's time-consuming, too. And there's a committee working on that with representation from a lot of different pockets of our community, including the county. Christopher Pierce from the prosecutor's offices on that committee. And then homelessness and housing in partnership with the county and others. You may be hearing some, something about this, huh? We're looking at what we can do to be partners in the, in the community and in the region towards, towards long-term solutions. There's been a lot of meetings the last week or two. I think I've spent eight hours a day on calls and meetings the last few days on this topic after some things erupted with the seminary park situation. And, you know, the upside of that is, I think, it now has us all focused on, you know, this concern. This isn't just going to go away. And we need to come together around the table and look at meaningful solutions. And I think there's consensus that it's not shelters we need. It's, we kind of, we have shelters, and they're good, they're good shelters, all things considered. You know, it's not a perfect system, of course. And it shouldn't, it shouldn't be. That's not where you want people to stay. We have a bottleneck at that next level into housing that's either supportive or affordable. And we're, you know, we need to look at what works around, you know, other communities and how we can work as a region so that, you know, if people are coming here from, say, Green County or Owen County, how can we get them back there, but, but supported? And there are things we can look at that are innovative. You know, there are communities that incentivize landlords in different ways, that maybe have risk mitigation pools for landlords, things like that. So I think you'll hear a lot more about this soon, but I did want to just tease this out just to give you an idea of what all United Way is doing right now. And yeah, we couldn't do it without you all and your support and your commitment to tackling really tough problems. And I just wanted to express my gratitude to you each and to anyone who's listening because the entire community really came together around COVID and the need to help those who need help right now. And if folks want to stay informed or to learn more, I put down our information there, including my personal information, because I always welcome your feedback, your questions, your ideas. So yeah, with that, I'd be happy to answer questions or hear any thoughts you may have.
Yes, thank you very much for that presentation. Just, you know, reiterates how lucky we are in Monroe County and Bloomington to have your organization, you know, doing this work in the community. And, you know, I can't think of any other organization that I would want kind of leading on that COVID-19 Relief Fund initiative. I think it's been a resounding success up to this point. I know there's still a lot of work remaining, and you all and many members of the community. We're all in touch with that and understanding of the challenges ahead. But I think we're very well prepared, very well equipped with the help of, you know, organizations like United Way of Monroe County. So thank you so much for all of the work that you have done as well, too. Let's, let's check with members of council here to see if there's any questions or comments. See Mr. Deckard, your hand first.
Thank you very, thank you very much, Mr. President. And Ephraim, thank you so much for being here. This is a question comment and probably a bit of a softball, and hopefully that's helpful to your organization. And I'll just lay it out there, I'm extremely partial to United Way. I'm proud in a past life to have worked for you on that team. And I'm proud to be a volunteer and see all the things you do. And I have to tell you, every time I crack open the paper or get an email update from United Way or hear something about what United Way is doing, including this, I have so much relief because United Way has always been there for the community and always jumped in there. And I'm so glad under your tenure, all the new things that are being added to that. It's a, it's a real credit. One thing is the council and the county jumped in to support this fund. But I think a point that could be reiterated, I know my church supports that fund. I know the individuals can and businesses. And there's a lot of us that we on our own cannot figure out how to help during COVID. But you can do that because you're brilliant and be you all, you know, because you, you stay in the tough issues that a lot of us kind of walk back from when we get frustrated. So if folks want to help out with that, it could be any type of financial support or other resources. Would you like to say anything on that?
Yeah, that's, I'm very humbled by all your remarks. I think it mostly speaks to our community's generosity and the leadership of our local governments that, you know, see the potential for partnerships and just a generous community that does what it can to take care of our neighbors and friends and all of us. And yeah, if anyone is able to contribute, you can go to monroeyunitedway.org and you'll find the link there to support to the level that you can. It can be towards the targeted COVID Relief Fund or the ongoing work. You'll see different options there. And it can be a, you know, recurring contribution or a one-time thing. And this time of year, a lot of people are selling off stocks. And especially if you're over 70 and a half, hopefully you know about all those tax breaks that are helpful for you from your IRA. you from your IRA. So yeah, I, I, that, that's, that's an easy one. Now, as we've sort of, you know, found ways to get out and about in the community a little more safely, agencies, some of them do need volunteers. And we look to our partners at the Bloomington Volunteer Network for a lot of those requests. So things are posted there and you can go there and take a look. And then on the, the, I'll give advocate volunteers. So the advocacy piece is, you know, join, join the Wake Up With United Way series. A lot of you have. That's where we try to dive into topics, but, but offer some direction on, on how you can get better engaged with the topic. So that information's on our website and, and on Facebook, too. And they're, they're always interesting and topical and hopefully get people engaged in, in that space. So thank you for the, the question, Trent.
Thank you for your leadership.
Any other questions or comments? From council? Well, I'll just, I'll just close also in saying, Afra, thank you so much for, we talked on the phone last week or the week before, but just wanted to say thank you so much for the, the terrific service as well on the RDC. And appreciate all that you've done for us in that aspect as well, too. And glad that you'll be able to have some more time now to be able to devote to your very busy and important work that you're doing with United Way. So thanks for everything.
Well, thank you, and I, I'm excited to partner with the county on the next big tough issue to tackle. I'm, I'm so grateful that you're all taking a, a leadership on, on homelessness and long-term solutions. It's been great to work with Margie and Angie and the commissioners and others in, in recent days and weeks. And, and I know we'll, we'll all be working closely together moving forward. And yes, for the RDC, it was really an honor to serve for these few years. And you guys, I, I, this is where we intersect, you know, that commission intersects with the, the council so much. Councilmember McKim, just great to have you as that sort of liaison there. You're so insightful and, and helpful and, and you kind of, you know, lead a lot there. And I think we've, we've done a lot of good things, but yeah, something had to give. And I, I don't think you want me stepping down from my day job, so I guess it had to be the RDC. And I appreciate your understanding of that.
Absolutely. Well, thank you very, thanks again for joining us. Happy holidays and we look forward to keeping in touch with you.
Thank you, same here. Happy holidays, everyone. Thanks for having me here tonight.
Take care.
Yeah. Good to see you.
Okay. And we will now move on next to, I believe is our legal department. Where am I on this thing? Yes. Legal department is next.
Counsel, I move to approve the Monroe County Correctional Center contract.
Second.
All right, welcome, Mr. Cockrell.
Good evening. And hopefully, I, I don't know if I've looked at the participants, but maybe Sam Crowe may be in the audience. I think he was going to attempt to, to make it as well as the sheriff. I guess what we have presented in this is-
Hold on just a second. We, I see Mr. Crowe's hand is up with, let's promote him to the panel as well. And then I see Captain Davis. Is he a party to this conversation as well, too? That, okay, we may want to have him-
Mr. Trippany, George Trippany is also there.
Yes.
Good evening, counsel, Sam Crowe.
Oh, great. Welcome, Mr. Crowe. Welcome, Mr. Davis, and welcome, Mr. Trippany. Sorry to interrupt you there, Mr. Cockrell.
No, that's great. I think they're, they're important pieces to this, to this contract. And I think they're, they're here for the answer questions if you have some at any point. This contract, and maybe I should take a step back. We've negotiated a contract with the jail staff, a one-year basis contract for the last, I would say, three or four years with kind of the same goal. Each, each year, our goal has been, what can we do to help reduce the turnover in, in the jail? And so I think incrementally, I think we're maybe getting a little closer. It's really hard to tell based upon COVID because COVID, I think it's had an effect on, on, on the turnover. And I think it's actually probably suppressed that turnover quite a bit because of the uncertainty in, in the job markets. But we worked on that kind of issue for, for the last few years. And I think we're, we're kind of working on it piecemeal, piecemeal, leading up to this contract. So the first thing I'd point out about this contract, it is not a one-year contract. It's a three-year contract. And I think there's a couple of different reasons for that. One is that I, working with Sam and, and the, the union members, we feel that, I think there's a feeling that this contract probably is going to, to go further than any of the other ones. And probably we want to give it a little bit more time to, to judge the, the success of whether this is really a reduction in turnover or not. I think there are, there are two, other than the, the length of it, there are two other main differences from the previous contract. One has to do with personnel policy changes where we, we remove the sick time and we have personal benefit days now instead. Then the, the contract is, is changed to reflect that kind of change in terminology with our county personnel policy handbook and our, and our personal. The other, and the, the other change that is kind of unique to the, the jail is that it is the pay structure. With the current agreement that, that you guys are looking at tonight, this would get a, this would go with a base salary for each employee plus a, and, and the salary is different, of course, depending on whether they are a officer, a, a corporal, a captain, you know, they're, they are scaled. But on top of that base pay, there would be a 48 cents with, which is roughly equivalent to a thousand dollar a year increase for each full year of, of county employment. And so that's much different than our current grid system with our other, with our other employees. But we have a, but we have to, we, we're doing this to deal with the, the turnover issues. And so I think talking to management at the jail and talking to staff at the jail, they feel that this would go a long way to reducing the turnover that they see. It's not going to eliminate the turnover, you know. And then I don't think we want to do something that would necessarily eliminate turnover, but it will have a reduction in turnover so we can have employees there longer. I think the anticipated cost of this is in salary is 66,000. And that's, we have over 60 employees, seven, I think this contract covers 71 employees. So you can tell just by the, the difference in what this does for the budget, the salary versus the, what was budgeted, you can tell that we've got a lot of people who are working in the jail that have, you know, two, three, four years experience. We don't have a lot of people at the jail that has 10, 12, 14 years of experience. And so we want to try to create an atmosphere where these, where people who are working in our jail see this as a career path and a, and a place where they could have a career so that we can, you know, keep our training in place. I mean, we, we go through a lot of training with our jail staff. You know, we could augment it more if, if we have a, a, a situation where we have less turnover. We think in the long run, it would lead to better service to our, to our community. I think that's all I really have. If you have questions, I, I know Sam and George and Ryan are here that maybe help answer.
Thank you, Mr. Cockrell. Yes, Mr. McKim.
Thanks. And I just have a quick question for Jeff. I do hope we hear from Sam a little bit on the, on kind of the benefits of the contract. But I, I believe I read this, Jeff, but is it, is it the intention that then these numbers would then just in future years be escalated by whatever cost of living adjustment that the, the council chooses? So this, they'd still be on the standard annual cost of living plan as everybody else?
I think so. I think it may look a little bit different in, in that I think it would only, i- i- if you're looking about it as looking at the grid that you have for most employees, you're basically just looking at that year zero minimum amount in the grid is the base pay. So if base pay was increased 2%, then that would increase that base 2%. So in that respect, yes, it is. I would say that the contract does, would not, does not allow for an increase in the annual 48 cent per year, right? So it's just affecting that base pay and not affecting the, the annual bump, if you will.
Right. So in other words, it wouldn't compound itself is really what you're saying. Okay, thanks.
And yeah, I'd, I'd also like to hear from Mr. Crowe as well, too. On, we, we had a conversation a couple of weeks back that, and Mr. Crowe was very helpful and kind of helping me understand a lot of the benefits of this. May be good to just reiterate some of that here for the council. Mr. Crowe?
Hey, good evening again, council members. Thank you for having us tonight. I appreciate it and I know all of our staff do. This is, this contract is something that Jeff and I and the members of the bargaining unit have worked on quite a bit this past year. And I think Jeff pretty much hit the nail on the head with what he, or how he was explaining it. The jail is a very unique place to work in the county. We're one of the few areas that works 24 hours a day, seven days a week. We're essential employees, we're always there no matter what happens, kind of like a postman, rain, snow, sleet or shine, we're there. I think in order to keep staff happy, we have to do something to entice them a little bit. With the current bump system used by the county, from three to eight years, there's no real incentive until you get to that eighth year. By doing something like this where they get that 48 cents every year, that entices them a little bit and that gives them some incentive to want to stay. If you look at the, the service records of the staff we have in the jail, I think over half of the people that we have are at, at or below that three-year mark. So that tells you we don't have a lot of experience in the jail. And that's what we're wanting to try to do is keep that experience, keep people from moving to other areas within the county. I know we, we have a few jobs that are the same classification as other jobs within the county. The one thing people don't look at is the atmosphere. There's no other atmosphere like there is in the jail, the sights, the sounds, the smells. Even if they don't work in direct contact with the inmates, they still have to put up with the atmosphere. We don't have windows. You know, it's just, it's not a pleasant place to work and it's not for everybody. So as Jeff said, we're not going to totally wipe out the turnover, but hopefully this will do something that will help, again, entice those people to stay past three years or stay past eight years when it comes to that point. We've talked to, with the staff, I think the staff are very excited about this. And again, that's another thing to entice them to stay. We're trying to do things that's going to make their jobs better, their lives better. And I think that's the ultimate goal of this contract. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, any other questions or comments, Mr. Iverson? Yes?
Yeah, I had a question about one of the, the incentives for pay in that if an employee leaves the county and returns to work as a correctional officer, then the full years of service are going to count towards the increase. And do we have a lot of employees in the jail who, who do that where they, they leave the correction center and then come back after a set period of time?
Right now, I think there's five or six. And we only have a couple that have came from other areas of the county. What we see more often is people that have left the jail, go out and experience another type of job and it, it doesn't meet their expectations. So they try to come back to the jail. So again, we get that experience back, we get the training that we put into it and we, we reap the rewards from those people coming back. With most types of public service, and I hate to sound cliche about this, but it kind of gets in your blood. We spend as much time with our coworkers as we often do with our families. So they become a second family to us. And there's a, a bonding of something you don't get in other types of work. So that draws people back occasionally when they've left. So.
Anything further from council? Yes, Councilor Munson?
Yes, Commander Crowe. I know that previously, one of the challenges for jail administration has been handling overtime. Do you think this has improved? And do you think the new contract will continue that improvement?
I certainly, as far as improving, I think we've done a good job this year with overtime. We were very fortunate, we had several part-time employees this year. I don't know if that's COVID-related because we had a good, stable foundation, a good, stable job. But we've had, we haven't had as big of a turnover this year as we have had in previous years. So I think by, by keeping the people in the jail, by keeping our part-time workforce up, that reduces our overtime. And again, that's what we're trying to do with this is we're trying to keep the people happy, to give them the, want to stay, which is everything else.
So, so let me follow up on that. Do part-time employees receive any benefits?
No, they won't. Not a-
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Hawk?
Yes, Mr. Crowe, I should say Commander Crowe. I hear you saying the turnover has not been as great this year. And it makes me wonder, or at least consider that perhaps that is because we have reduced the amount of population in the jail. I think every time we get that crowded jail situation and that pressure on the people who work there in the jail, trying to keep everything under control, it, it's just a lot more stressful. And we don't know when that might happen again. But I do know that when you see any department that starts having a lot of turnover as the jail has traditionally had, it almost always says that there is something that the county council needs to do and could do to assist. And so this is a job not just anybody would want. And so we need to properly reward the people who are willing to do it.
Thank you, and you are so very correct. This isn't a job for everyone. It takes a special type of personality, a special type of person. So when we get those people, we need to do everything we can to keep them. So thank you for recognizing that.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? And council, Mr. McKim?
Um, you know, I'm, I'm a little loathe to ask this because it isn't entirely germane to this specific issue, but I was just wondering if Mr. Crowe could take a moment to, because the, the issue is in the news right now. Talk to the, the public about the, the COVID cases and, and what, and how the jail is responding. Well, I actually tested positive myself, so I'm in quarantine at home right now. So today we had the, the task force come into the jail. And Major Trippany, George Trippany, might be able to answer more questions about this. But I know that the task force came into the jail and did several tests today on staff that wanted to be tested and on specific areas in the jail where we've had a few cases pop up. We're still doing everything we have done in the past. We are asking our questions, we're taking temperatures at the time of intake. Anyone that's processed up goes into a quarantine block for- Anyone that's processed up goes into a quarantine block for approximately 14 days. Once they clear that 14 days after medical checks, so on, we will classify them and move them into the area that they are supposed to be moved into. We do sanitation three times a day for every hand-touch area of the jail, door handles, rails, pencil sharpeners, telephones, anything that you can think of that has someone touching it, we sanitize it. Then anytime someone's out of the block, we will sanitize the area that they go to. All of the inmates are issued masks. All of the staff have masks. It's becoming another part of our uniform. We have UVC lighting to mobile units that we move throughout the jail to different areas. The sheriff has purchased and had installed two ionization systems for the ventilation systems in the justice building, not to not just the correctional center, but the justice building to handle the two main ventilation systems. We're doing everything we can to try to keep people, both staff and inmates, as safe and as healthy as possible. You know, and I think we've done a pretty good job. We've been at this for eight or nine months now, and we've just started to have a few cases pop up. We also have two cells that are negative pressure cells. So we're utilizing those for anyone that does test positive or has had possible contact with someone that's tested positive, and we try to keep those cells open for when we need them. And then we utilize them when we need them. So all in all, I think we're doing everything we can right now.
Thank you for the update and stay healthy, Sam.
Thank you.
Yes, and and thanks for for that information, and thanks also to Sheriff Swain for keeping the community informed as well, too. Wish you a quick and speedy recovery there, Sam.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council? Mr. Deckard?
I I would just join and say, Sam, I hope best best wishes for quick and speedy, non-symptoms and feeling great and with everybody there in the jail. One thing is, and I I think it should go without saying, and I think you know that, but I just want to say it. If if there's anything this council can do for the the jail in that effort or any other effort similar to this agenda item here, you know, always let us know we are here for that completely and would be eager to do whatever it is that might be.
Well, thank you. I know the council has always been very supportive of the jail and everything that we're trying to do and everything we try to accomplish. So we we really appreciate.
Okay. Anything else before we do public comment on this item? All right, seeing none, do we have any public comment on the contract? Seeing no public comment, we will have a roll call vote, please.
On the motion to approve the Monroe County Correctional Center contract, Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Okay, now we'll move on to item four B.
Counsel, I move to approve the amendments to the 2021 salary ordinance due to the merit deputy and correctional center contracts.
Second.
Okay, and is this Mr. Cockrell as well? Maybe not.
It can be.
Okay, yeah, why don't you provide a little background on this?
Well, I I think the background may be fairly self-evident. We just you guys just approved the jail contract at an earlier meeting this year. You but after the salary ordinance was approved, we we may we approved the contract for the merit deputies. And this is just a, I guess, at this point, a housekeeping item to make sure that salary ordinance reflects what is in those two agreements.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? And yes, Mr. McKim?
Oh, just I I just want to check in with Michelle just to make sure that that she's reviewed it and there aren't any other changes from what was published in the packet.
Yeah, those those two items are good.
Thank you.
Great. Anything else from council? Is there any public comment? We'll do a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
And next up is our sheriff's office, item five.
Counsel, I move to approve the 2021 salary ordinance amendments of the Chief Deputy Three grid and the Sheriff Jail One grid due to the increase of the merit deputy salaries.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, and my understanding is Councilmember Deckard will present some information on this request.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, members of council. I'll start this off, and then if Michelle has any comments about the grid or any of our folks here from either the sheriff's office or on the jail side want to make comments, certainly would welcome that. As you all know from our discussions earlier in the meeting, in this fall, winter, we've been working on both the merit deputy contract, the correctional center contracts, and the changes that we have now done with those contracts are reflected in the 2021 salary ordinance that do reflect positive changes. That said, along with that, we have been approached by some of the leadership in the sheriff's office regarding remaining considerations that now are affected by those changes. That affects certain positions, specifically the jail commander, the chief deputy, which fall under the CD three classification, and the captain of operations and assistant jail commander, which fall under the SD one classification. And two, to due to that adoption of the merit deputy contract and the correctional center contract, these positions under this classification, these classifications find themselves in a situation within the salary grid where in plain terms, you may have someone of leadership and supervision supervising and leading individuals that may be more compensated. And so we're we, as we, I believe, have done in the past, we historically have to, historically, we've done, we have to look to changing the grid now for leadership in the sheriff's office under this, on the grid, under these two positions to reflect and go to scale to those changes. Both Counselor Wiltz and I met as late as last Friday with representatives of the sheriff's office. We had Chief Deputy Brummett and Captain Davis with us. We believe that the grid that Kim has prepared comes to a solution which takes care of both updating the grid around the changes that have been made, at least in reflective to the changes made with both those contracts, and also reflect changes that maintain a rank order structure that allows the the both the sheriff's office and the the jail to operate. I don't know if Kim had any other comments to make about the grid or others, but I wanted to leave my part there and turn that over to others.
Thank you, Mr. Deckard.
And the grids that are in the packet, if if you guys have looked at them, I made a typo. Okay, so I want to share the screen if possible. Well, Fooey. Sorry. I think that's the right one. Yes, okay, so in the packet, I gave you where they're at on the grid with regards to the four positions. So that is this section right here. So we have two people at the deputy three, one for the jail sheriff one, there's one at the eight-year, one at the 14-year. This is the current salary of ordinance grids that were approved for 2021. When I created this one right here, I accidentally put this amount in here, which caused an error. So this has been updated from what is in the packet. So you'll see that there's actually a difference here of $54,000 rather than what was the other? $49,000. So I wanted to alert you to that that difference.
Thank you, Michelle. Does anybody have any questions on on any of this information that we've been presented? Mr. McKim?
Yeah, so sorry, I'm just still trying to track those changes that were made there. I'm oh, can you?
Where do you want me to go?
Yeah, right, right there. Okay, so so what has changed? It looks like is in the SJ is only in the SJ one classification, right? Is that correct?
Correct.
From what and then it's
Yeah, I made an error on this grid.
One year, three year, eight year, 14, and maximum are all different. Is that is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Counsel, I move we amend the, I move we amend the motion on the floor to set the sheriff jail one classification hourly rates for one year at $32.05, three years at $33.50, eight years at $34.22, 14 years, $34.95, and maximum $36.40. Second.
Motion and a second. Do we have any discussion or questions on Mr. McKim's motion? Seeing none, we'll do a vote, please.
Counselor Hawk? Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor McKim? Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Okay. So now we'll go, yes, Mr. Iverson?
So I just wanted to clarify that this proposed schedule here is for four employees. That's is that correct?
Right.
It's two at Chief Deputy Three and two at SJ one?
That is correct.
Okay. Any further questions or comments? Ms. Wiltz?
I just wanted to to first of all, thank Trent for taking the lead on introducing this and explaining everything. And as he mentioned, I was I was at least witness to some of this, if not super involved, but I I think it kind of should go without saying, but I'm going to say it. This is obviously necessary. We've, you know, been working on making the the deputy, the merit deputies contract as as equitable as can be, and I this is obviously directly related, and we certainly wouldn't want to undermine morale and have have folks not being compensated in ways that make sense. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that I was fully supportive of this as a liaison.
Great, thank you. So we had a few people kind of simultaneously. We'll start with Ms. Hawk, who I saw first, and then Ms. Munson, and then Chief Deputy Brummett.
This is just an observation that I had just thought about that I I know there'd been some concern that, well, you know, this wasn't in keeping with what we've done with some of the other departments, et cetera, et cetera. I think you know what I'm speaking of. And really, when it comes right down to it, I'm not so certain that we need to be looking at the sheriff's department and the jail and and tie it to what we do with the other grids because they are so very, very different than, I mean, you can always tell when you're when the pay isn't right, when they would just as soon go up to Morgan County and and, you know, it's a quick one-two, they're there, and we lose our staff to Morgan County. We don't see that happening with the rest of county government as much. So I'm just thinking we need to look at those positions separate and apart from what we might be doing in some other departments. May maybe I'm wrong on that, but I'm just thinking we need to not let these get so far behind. We waited too long to get the jail where they needed to be. And I and I think that was in part because we were waiting on what was going on with the rest of the county government, and they're just separate and apart. Just my personal thought.
Thank you.
I'm open to be proven wrong.
Councilmember Munson?
I just wanted to bring up the point that making a grid adjustment for the supervisory positions is something that we've had to go back and do previously. Anytime we make a change in in other positions. And we just have to remember, we could do it all at once if we would remember to do it. But it's a nor it's a normal course of events to take care of this.
Yes, thank you. And Chief Deputy Brummett, welcome.
I'm sorry if I'm going out of order here. I did want to thank Trent and Kate and Kim for zooming in with Ryan and I a couple of days ago and listening to us, and Kim did an excellent job explaining the situation. And I know Kate has some issues with her Zoom meeting, but she sent Trent a text and, you know, said that she thought it was a good idea, the right thing to do. And I just want to basically thank all three of you for for seeing us and taking care of this.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Any any further questions or comments from council? Is there any public comment on the underlying motion to amend the salary ordinance? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Great, thank you. And next up is item six, again with our legal department.
Counsel, I move to approve the interlocal cooperation agreement between Monroe County and township governments to deliver relief from immediate and longer-term COVID-19 economic impacts.
Second.
All right. Welcome. Ms. Rice?
Yes. Okay, oops, can you see me? Okay, so we are continuing the interlocal agreement that we entered into with the township. Okay, so we are continuing the interlocal agreement that we entered into with the township trustees. And this continuation of the interlocal agreement will last until mid 2021, and it provides an additional $100,000. So there's no other changes to the interlocal agreement other than the date and the amount of money we're providing. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Any comments? Mr. McKim?
Just a comment that this, that I am really proud of this innovative partnership to deliver direct aid to Monroe County residents. I think partnering with township trustees, I commend the commissioners for having taken the lead on that and also for engaging the council throughout the process. Absolutely supportive of continuing this as long as it's necessary, which I hope is not much longer, but it could well be.
2021 is going to be a good year. Ms. Wiltz, you were next, and then Ms. Hawke.
I actually was going to say something very similar to what Jeff said. This is something that I think we can feel really good about and is critically important.
I just wanted to add that not only were we able, we as a group, able to take taxpayers' dollars and be able to use it for a very good purpose. We know that the trustees have better access, have better training to make sure that it's being distributed appropriately and in ways that can help best. And I just think that it was the right thing to do to, because that's why the trustees are the closest to the people. And that's the reason why many of us have fought to keep the trustee system. And it's just, it's for the everyday problems, but it is especially true for something like this. And so I'm grateful that we have active trustees. Thank you.
And if I could, piggyback on that, I want to echo that Councilmember Hawke is exactly right. The township trustees are statutorily required to deal with issues involving poverty and to provide assistance to people who are suffering financial hardship. So it makes perfect sense for us to partner with them. And you might have noted when Afrot Pfefferman was mentioning dealing with issues of homelessness and housing insecurity. I think the township trustees are also involved in those issues, and we're going to be working with them, United Way and the foundation and other organizations to try to deliver relief where we can and to build short and long-term solutions. So I think that this model that we've hit on here in 2020, hopefully, will be able to continue in the future. And we can provide partnerships. As you know, county government cannot cert, or cannot, you know, solve all social ills. However, we can and should be good partners with other levels of government and nonprofits. And so that's what we're looking to do with this interlocal, and thank you so much for funding it. And, and we're going to keep, you know, keep going in this direction if we can.
Very good. I see Commissioner Thomas has her hand up.
Yes, thank you. I just want to say thanks to the board for considering this. I also want to update you all that initially we had allocated 100,000. And as of our meeting on December 16th, we were requested for the last 25,000 of that. So we are at 100,000 already.
Yep, yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Munson?
Yes, as a former township official, I wanted to just send a message to the public that every resident of Monroe County is also a resident of one of the townships. And this is where you turn for your, for your first help, if you need help. And a lot of people think townships are just for people who live outside the city. That is not true, of course. And if you, if you have any confusion, people will help you find which township you're in if you don't know.
Great, thank you. Any further comments or questions from counsel? I'll just say thanks to the Board of Commissioners for continuing to be innovative with how we handle these situations and recognizing that, kind of as Margie was mentioning, that, you know, the, these organizations like the trustees and United Way of Monroe County, they've got the infrastructure in place. They've, they've got the framework in place that will allow them to really triage these, these types of situations that we're seeing in the community and most effectively deliver positive outcomes and results for them. So thank you for all of that and look forward to continuing to work on this together with you. Any public comment? Seeing none, we will have a roll call vote on the approval of the interlocal agreement.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Decker?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor McKem?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Okay. And next up is item seven, our technical services department.
Counsel, I move to approve the technical services department's request for an additional appropriation in Fund 2502-0000, telephone maintenance in the amount of $90,000 in the services category.
Second.
All right. And who will be, I believe, is it Commissioner Thomas will be presenting on this one?
Yes, and I know Eric Evans was, I think he was on this call, but he might not be. And I think Angie is available as well, and she may be-
Yes, yeah.
Because she, we brought this initially due to the issues related to a shortfall in another fund, and this is what we thought was the best path forward. And Ms. Purdy?
Thank you. Here we go. I think that, okay, so no video, that's fine. Yes, this is actually, if you recall, I believe it was at your last meeting, we had requested this additional appropriation in cable franchise. However, it had not been advertised in that fund. And so that request was actually modified to changing it to a category transfer that was approved by you guys, because we do have, we did have money in the rehab line for the Nat Hill room. So basically, what this does is this just allows us to correct everything that happened before. It provides for the additional that we had originally wanted. It allows us to put the money back into the Nat Hill refurbishing project. I believe we have a contract for that. So anything that's not completed, we can actually encumber for next year. So hopefully that under, or explains what we did in this situation.
All right, thank you, Ms. Purdy. Mr. McKim?
Yeah, I feel like we've already discussed the substance of this, and then we had already agreed we wanted to take it out of cable franchise fee. So this is just discussed. I am interested in the contract. Can anybody say anything about who was, who the contract was awarded to and what the schedule is?
Oh, I cannot.
Sorry.
Eric will know all of that. But I do not, and I'm not actually sure that we have that contract yet now that you say that, because I don't remember anything coming to the commissioners. So it may not be a contract yet. So if that's the case, then we'll have to come back for the additional, to replenish that line, because we did not, we did not budget for it in 2021.
Okay, thanks.
Well, keep us posted. Any other questions or comments? Any public comment? Is there a, I'm sorry, did I miss somebody? Saw a hand up here. Ms., Commissioner Thomas, did you have, saw your hand raised?
No, I, I didn't. I, that was from before, sorry.
Okay, no problem. Just wanted to check. Any public comment? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote on the additional appropriation request.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke? Not present. Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKem?
Yes.
Counselor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Counselor Decker?
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero.
All right.
It's okay.
Would Counselor Hawke like to weigh in on that vote?
No, thanks. Not sure where we're on it, so I-
Okay.
I think I had to step away.
Okay, so we'll move on to item eight, which again is our Board of Commissioners. And I believe Ms. Purdy is here. Ms. Wiltz, I'm sure has a motion right now.
Counsel, I move to approve the commissioner's request for new positions, the fleet and building manager and the fleet mechanic.
All right.
I'm going to second that, but, but point of, kind of point of order, Mr. Chair. I just want to make sure we clarify what it is that we're actually doing tonight. You'll probably take care of that, Ben. Will you frame this as to what, what we're actually being asked to do, since it's not really approving the position?
Yeah, exactly. And I'll, I'll make sure that this is verified by our members of PAC as well as Ms. Purdy. We did hear a request at our most recent PAC meeting earlier this month. And that request was to send this position of fleet and building manager to WIS to have it reviewed for classification purposes. And I, my interpretation of the decision from PAC, and correct me if I'm wrong, was that we wanted to kind of get a better sense of the council first. If it, if, just to kind of get a sense, we weren't, you know, fully, we didn't want council to make this decision on the new approval of the position, but just to kind of get a sense of it, if we do want to move forward with kind of exploring it more, sending it up to WIS and having them review it. So this is not, any decision that's made tonight, I don't believe, would be to approve the position, but rather kind of just understanding what the council's sense is on moving forward with the, with the WIS and PAC process. Is that about right? Mr. Decker, Ms. Hawke?
I think Counselor Hawke could speak to some of this a little bit more, but I think that the general sense that I took from the meeting was this would reflect approval, getting approval for these two positions after a WIC, WIC, WIS, sorry, WIS classification would begin the county to a serious step towards something akin to, I don't want to say department, but a serious commitment of the county. And before that step was taken, I think we wanted to get a sense of where the council was on that commitment.
Ms. Hawke?
Yes. It was my feeling, and still is, that we've been spending quite a bit of money with WIS, sending things to them. And I think we need to make certain before we send something else out to them that's going to cost dollars that we, that we have a good sense, a good feel for about what it's going to cost the county to set up this sort of another portion of, sounds like a new department. Now, while I understand it'll still be under the county commissioners, just as HR is under the county commissioners and, and, you know, the building department's under the county commissioners. But this is going to be, I just think we need to have a good sense of what, where we go financially. And if we think this is a good idea and we can afford to do it, then we see what the salary should be, what the classification should be from WIS. That is just, I would not think it would be appropriate for the PAC committee to start spending county dollars for something that we didn't feel like we had support from the council to move forward with.
Right. And Mr. Iverson, I saw your hand up earlier. Did you have a question?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, but the first is, the motion on the floor is, is what?
So I think, I think it should be withdrawn, if that's a thing.
Yeah.
And then I just would like to open for discussion.
Yes, I think it's more of a discussion, work session.
Yeah.
Since, since we've already, and we've, sorry, point of order, since we've already introduced it and discussion has already begun, we should probably table it or do something formal rather than just withdraw. It's, it's already out there now. That's my opinion. I mean, I, what I, my, my suggestion would be to continue with discussion, and then somebody can make a motion either to, you know, turn it down or to table it or whatever the sense of the council is.
May I speak to the item?
Sure.
So I think what I would like to articulate is that the reason that we are kind of doing this backwards, really, because normally it goes to PAC and then, and then comes to you guys. But that was because of the mechanic. There is a mechanic that's actually budgeted 2021. However, there are no, there's nothing to support said mechanic. And that was what really, I think, caused PAC to have this grave concern about, you know, this is much more than just, you know, a position here or a position there. This is, has the potential to be quite costly to the county when you start figuring out that we need, would need tools and lifts and various other items that would be necessary for a mechanic. The commissioners are currently looking at an enterprise fleet service. And that fleet service would eliminate the need for a county mechanic. It does not eliminate the need for a fleet and building manager. And I just want, it's, my understanding is that, I was coming tonight to kind of explain, at that point in time, I was going to give you the cost to add a mechanic. But we'd like to just kind of take that off the table at this point until we determine if enterprise will in fact be the way that we would go. But I do want to reiterate the need for the fleet and building manager. And fleet is still important to be part of that person's title, because even if we outsource the maintenance through enterprise, we still have to have someone who serves as a contact for the county, who will ensure that our county departments are getting their vehicles in for their routine maintenance, that we have a, an accurate database of all of our inventory of vehicles. We need to have someone that is a contact for receiving invoices and then knowing to which department to send them to. The commissioners don't pay for all of the light duty, if you will, fleet expenses. So there's some that would actually go to, say, for instance, YSB. And I think that on occasion, Community Corrections has some also. So my understanding is, what I'm doing tonight is letting you guys know what we're looking at and letting you also know how important this position of the fleet and building manager is to the county, because highways no longer managing our fleet. They're not managing our, again, I refer to as a light duty and sheriff fleet. And so, you know, I'm doing what I can with that, but we need somebody who can focus on those particular issues as well as ensuring that our buildings are being maintained accurately or any jobs that we have regarding maintenance of the outside of our buildings. We have a lot of the justice building and the showers building and health building. You know, we've had a lot of repairs that are being done. And it's just imperative- it's just imperative that we have someone who can be on site and can actually come back and say, yes, this in fact has been met as part of the repair process, and we are ready to move forward from, from here to there. So, my, again, understanding and request is that you would approve me going back to PAC in January, and then presuming PAC and you agree, sending the job description to WIS. I can guess as to what I think the job classification will come back be, will be, but I don't think that's fair at this point in time to you or anybody else. So if we send the job description to WIS, then we'll get a classification, and at that point in time, I would come back and request appropriation for that position, and at that time, you would be able to say yes or no. And at that time, if not before, hopefully, well, I'm hoping that it would happen quite simultaneously. I could give you the information regarding the costs associated with a mechanic versus us outsourcing with enterprise.
So I think, I think that we, what I'll do now is just move that we continue with discussing the, the Commissioner's request for new positions, but that we table the request to approve the fleet and building manager position until our January work session meeting.
Second.
Okay. Any questions or comments about that? And then if this passes, we'll continue to have more discussion about kind of next steps on what we want to do with this and with PAC, but I think we all are in agreement, or at least I'm sensing that we're in agreement that we don't want to move forward with the motion that was read earlier. Any questions? Comments? Any?
I need to hear the motion again, so I know how, how we're supposed to be voting on this.
So, the motion is to continue talking about these positions, not making any decisions and tabling the approval of the fleet manager position to a future meeting, and that future meeting would be the January work session. The logic with that is that it would give us time to go through PAC again, and we would be able to revisit it at the January work session meeting. Does that make sense, Ms. Purdy?
No, I'm a little confused. I feel like we're not moving forward at all. I, I think that.
I think there's, there's a lot of parts to this conversation, though. Ms. McKim, did you have a question?
Yeah, I, I kind of want to reframe this a little bit. So just, just so I understand, we, or, so we can be clear, we have budgeted for the mechanic for 2021, but the position has not yet been approved. The Commissioner's Office would like to move forward through the PAC and WIS process for the fleet and building manager, and simultaneously would like to hold off on the mechanic position pending further decisions about an enterprise fleet management contract. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So, so I guess we could just table the whole thing, or I was going to make a motion essentially just to replace the, the, the motion with text that, that says, you know, that proposes that the commissioners move forward with PAC and WIS process and hold off on the mechanic position. So it's however you want to handle it.
Yeah, that was kind of what I was, how I was viewing it as well, too. So I'll withdraw my motion. If Mr. McKim can.
Restate his.
Yeah. Okay, I, I move that we replace the motion, the text of the motion on the floor with a motion to move, permit the Commissioner's Office to move forward through WIS classification for the for the fleet and building manager, and simultaneously request that they, that they not fill the mechanic position at this time.
Second. Okay, Ms. Hawke?
Yes. If we have some other group that's managing the fleet, then how, how should we even consider moving forward with a building and fleet manager if we don't know what the real duties is going to be of this person that's about to be hired? I think the whole thing should be as one whole and decide and find out if somebody else, if some other group's going to be doing the fleet, and then see what the real duties would be. We can't send something off to WIS when we don't even know what the duties are.
If I'm.
They do the job description by the duties that we provide to them. I think we're not ready for that decision.
I think we are, and, and the reason I say this is, you are, you are confusing the the functions of enterprise with actually managing our fleet. They don't do that. They will not be managing the fleet. We would still need someone to manage our, our vehicles. We still need that person. They will have software, they will have, so that we could do records, you know, but we still need somebody who can actually go in, look at the software, can manage the, the care, if you will, of these vehicles. The only thing, if we, the only thing that's really of question is whether we won't go with enterprise, or if we go with our own mechanic, because that's what's being replaced. It's not the management of our vehicles or our buildings, and the only thing that needs to be rem, description would be the oversight of a mechanic.
And all that goes with that.
Well, I've attached the job description, so you can see that there are many other duties other than managing a mechanic.
So, do, do you have a sense of when you'll have a determination on what direction to go in, either the enterprise or, or with a mechanic?
I don't. I, I would anticipate that after the beginning of the year, I will have information back from enterprise on a cost proposal for, for us, and then I would presume that I would be bringing that to council after the commissioners have made a decision. Because if the commissioners elect to go with the contract or the enterprise, and it's not maintaining our fleet, it's the mechanical side of it, then, when I, then when I would come to council, it wouldn't be to ask for a position for a mechanic. It would be just to continue, the appropriation for the manager. My concern is that we have gone this long without anybody managing other than me, and I recognize the need, and I'm, I feel that I'm not articulating it well, as to how badly we need this position to ensure that we, that we are doing things right, and that we are taking care of, you know, our staff, our employees, and our public, and that we have safe vehicles on the road. So.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. McKim.
Well, and I just want to say, the, the position description that's in the PAC is quite detailed, and I think quite well articulated, and it's, it's pretty clear that there's about approximately one line in there that would be different if we go with a, with a staff mechanic versus a contract, and that's really the only, that's the only decision there, and that, this position description does not hang on that, that particular distinction, that there are several pages of important duties that this position would be providing for the county, for its management of our assets, that are, that are independent of that decision.
Councilmember Wiltz?
Yeah, I, I think that Angie has made a very good case over, you know, as to why we need someone in this position, and my question is, and pardon me if I missed this in the job description, but is it about a 50% split between buildings and fleet in terms of amount of time and effort this person would be putting in, or is it, what, what do you see as the need there?
I, I think it is relatively even. Each of them are going to bring a certain learning curve for some people, so I, I definitely think that they're actually going to end up requiring kind of an equal amount of effort and attention. Now, in my mind, when someone comes into that, if we have fewer building projects going on, they'll be able to spend more time initially on getting the fleet lined out, because that's the thing, is this person's actually going to have to start a, a process, and having a, a database, and having, coming up with policies and for the maintenance of our vehicles. And one of the things that I would really like to see is that we ensure that all of our employees who are driving a vehicle provided by Monroe County Government goes through a driver training course, that we have someone who ensures that our employees who are driving our vehicles have valid driver's licenses. We have someone that is a contact in the event that there is a, a problem with a vehicle, or a problem with a building. And they can't always get ahold of our maintenance staff, but we also have a software program that's not being used in the manner that it can be used, and so then the other side of that is, let's get them, get that set up so that we can be more responsive, and and also triage, so we can be proactive, and as opposed to constantly reactive, which is kind of where we're at right now.
Mr. Iverson?
Yeah, I, Angie, I think you are being pretty articulate, but I, I'm wondering, since the job is so big, why are we combining fleet with building? Are these two separate duties?
Yes, they're two separate duties, but we have a maintenance staff, and so this person was, is definitely going to be doing more of an oversight, more of the professional side of it, working at the desk and the computer, ensuring that maintenance staff are doing what they need to be doing. So yeah, it's, it's, they're, they're two different focuses, but yet not really, when you think about it in the sense that they're all capital for the county, buildings and vehicles.
Ms. Wiltz?
Yeah, I have to say, I do see that, see them as related, I, you know, I'm not sure. I, I, I don't know enough to know whether it's too big of a job for one person, but to me, it does seem that it's all asset management, it's all, you know, putting in programs and, and plans that allow you to address these types of ongoing maintenance and preventive maintenance issues, whether it's a vehicle or a garage for the vehicle. It's all, you know, it's still going to be the same types of processes, you know, just different contracts, probably.
Yeah, exactly.
Ms. Munson?
Yes, I think I understand the position and duties, and my question is, has to do with the mechanical service for vehicles. Are there multiple businesses in Monroe County that would be interested in submitting a proposal for the enterprise work?
Actually, there are 26 facilities currently, who are actually already part of the enterprise family, if you will. And so there's, yeah, so they, we have lots of options.
So that just shows how, how little attention I give to my own vehicle, so thank you.
Mr. Deckard?
Thank you. I, I like the discussion we're having, because I think this is what PAC wanted, was to get a sense of where the, what the council thought about this before we start creating jobs and/or new departments in PAC, that, which is a, sort of a unique thing, and I appreciate the experience of the other two counselors on PAC that really thought of that, because, you know, I, I'm a bit in my rookie season. The honest-to-goodness truth about things are that things grow, right? There's not a lot of reduction that happens. You know, sometime in our founding, there was a sheriff, and maybe the sheriff had one, two deputies, and it grows, and we saw the work we did in three different line items tonight on that, and so I think it's appropriate to get a sense of the council, and the sense that I'm picking up in the conversations, unless I'm wrong, is that folks are fine with exploring the, the description for, moving forward with WIS, with a description for a fleet and building manager, and getting more information down the road on whether it's a fleet mechanic or a service that is contracted. That's the takeaway that I think that we're getting, and I think that helps inform PAC when we come back to them. I will say this, I, following the logic of what we've had, I do see a day where a future council will be asked to separate fleet and building manager into two jobs, and I think that's okay to think about that, but that's the sort of commitment. I do see a time where they will need space. The thing that amazes me most about our folks in the courthouse is how little space for as big a building that is, as you all have that are in there all day. So, getting that sense, I'm not hearing a lot of strong objections to exploring that route as we manage both our fleet and our buildings.
Thank you. And, yeah, I would agree with, with all of that. I think hearing from Angie has, this has been really helpful tonight in that, you know, I, I understand, I, now that, you know, the, the fleet manager position is the most critical at this time, the most urgent need, and I'm not, I also am not hearing a, a lot of objections to moving forward with the review by WIS on that, so, you know, I'm, I'm supportive of that, but if others are, I think now's the time to, to speak up about that. Ms. McKim?
I'm, I'm definitely supportive, but I also appreciate, I did Counselor Hawke and the other members of PAC's suggestion that this go to council, because it is a fairly large leap, it's not an incremental step over what we're doing now, that it is appropriate that the council consider this before expending the funds on WIS, so I, I do appreciate this, this process.
Councilmember Hawke?
Right. At the time that we discussed this, we were not aware of what the result was going to be, having to do with annexation. We still don't know what the result is going to be. We don't know what will happen with that, but, but for those folks who were not on the council before, not watching the dollars before, when we saw what could happen to our ability to operate if, if that annexation should take place, and we knew we were going to be looking at major cutbacks, and we already know that in 2022, we might. And we already know that in 2022, we might see a reduction in revenue. And, and we've been told many times that we should be trying to reduce staff, not grow staff. But you know what? If the rest of you feel real comfortable with this, let's just, whatever. You know, it's time to get back to the kitchen, folks. I told you I was gonna be baking cookies tonight. Let's get at it. Do it.
Okay.
Whatever.
Any other, any other questions or comments? And we've, I know we have a motion on the floor. Mr. McKim's motion is on the floor that we need to vote on.
And then on the underlying motion, if, if it passes, so.
Yeah, yeah.
And where we are, what, what?
We're on Mr. McKim's motion right now, which could you, just for, for everyone's.
Yes, i- it is to give, i- it is to replace the existing, uh, motion on the floor with, uh, with number one, uh, permission for the commissioner's office to move forward with PAC and WIS classification process. And two, to request that, uh, the commissioner's office hold off on, uh, hiring the mechanic pending further decisions about, uh, the fleet strategy. Which I believe they already intend to do. So that's not really telling them to do anything. It's just expressing our, our opinion.
Okay. Thank you for restating that. Any, uh, is there any public comment on this motion? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Hawke?
No.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Spooner?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passed six to one.
Okay.
Thank you.
Vote on the underlying motion as amended. And do we have any final questions, comments on on that? None? Any public comment? And we'll do a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Spooner?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
No.
Motion passed six to one.
Okay. So just, uh, for Ms. Purdy, for logistical purposes, we'll see you back at PAC at our next meeting and we'll be in touch with all those details for January. So that'll be soon.
Yes. So thank you all very much and happy holidays.
Yes, you too. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks. Bye bye.
And item nine is next, our legal department.
Counsel, I move to approve the legal department's request for an additional appropriation in Fund 1000-0277 litigation in the amount of $31,000 in the services category.
Okay, pick between Outback or Texas Roadhouse.
I will.
Dinner options there.
Oops, sorry. I'll take Outback, Kim. I wanna stay.
Order me the, order, just order me a club sandwich.
I'm hungry. Let's get going. I thought that was muted. Okay, my face is red.
All right, Ms. Rice.
Thank you for that introduction. That's awesome. Um, I am here to ask for money that the legal department needs to pay its bills. So we have, um, outstanding bills for some litigation that, uh, we, we've handled, um, for the commissioners and a settlement for some litigation we've handled from the planning department. And in order to pay our bills, we need $31,000. And so, um, it's pretty simple. Dave Schilling, I think is on the call, but he may, he had a conflict tonight, so I don't think he's gonna weigh in. Um, and he, you know, I, he did say that, uh, we sort of joked this afternoon that my desk may be in the rotunda. I may not get to be back in the legal department if I don't come through for the home team and get these dollars to pay, um, our bills. So I am hopeful that you will, uh, see it appropriate to, uh, appropriate this money. And, um, this will get us through for what we need for the rest of this year. Thank you.
Right. Thank you. Uh, Ms. Wiltz.
Just checking to make sure that someone seconded my motion.
Oh, yeah. Uh,
Second.
We need a second. Yeah, we got a second. Uh, okay. Uh, Kim, did you have a? Okay.
No, I was just gonna say that.
Okay. Uh, any, any other questions, comments? Council, Mr. McKim.
Wait, how, how much of this is, this appropriation request is for expenses already incurred or obligated versus potential future expenses that we have not yet actually incurred? Not talking about what's been billed, but what we've actually incurred as far as work that's been authorized and performed on our behalf.
When you say, well, um, when you say that has been incurred, but can you repeat your question?
Yeah, this is all billed.
Yeah.
These, these are bills. Okay. I, I mean, you, you know what I'm getting at. I do not support this litigation and so I don't wanna support future expenses, but I've already stated that I will certainly uh, vote to pay our bills. So.
These, yeah, these are for bills that we've received. And if we have future expenses related to the litigation, we expect to take those out of our $20, $21.
Thank you.
So, and the original commitment was, uh, $75,000, right?
It was. And then the council reduced it to tw- to 50. And so, yeah, so we're back asking essentially for the additional 25.
This closes it, this closes the $75,000 commitment out, right? Okay. Any other questions or comments? Any public comment? All right, we'll do a roll call vote, please.
On the motion to approve an additional appropriation in Fund 1000-0277, Counselor Hawke? No, not present. Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Spooner?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And, uh, next is our, uh, approval of minutes, item 10.
Counsel, I move to approve the summary minutes for the September 11th and 15th, 2020, 2021 budget review session number four, October 27th, 2020, and November 24th, 2020 work sessions, and November 10th, 2020 regular session as presented.
Second.
All right. Any questions or changes that, uh, need to be requested for the minutes? None? Any public comment on this request? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke is not present. Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Spooner?
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero.
All right. And, uh, so that wraps up all of our business for the evening. Is there, are there any, uh, council comments before we adjourn tonight? Uh, Councilmember Munson.
As, uh, the council's representative on the Solid Waste Management District Board, I just want to advise the public that this year after Christmas, the day after Christmas and the day after New Year's, the recycling sites, both downtown on South Walnut and, uh, the rural sites will be open. We've had, uh, Christmas and New Year's back up against, uh, holiday uh, time off for the sites and this posed a problem to many people. So if you ever have any question about whether the sites are open, go to gogreendistrict.com on the, the web and check the calendar. You'll find what is open, but no problem this year for you.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Munson. Uh, Councilmember McKim, did you have a? David?
Y- yes, it's, I only wanna say that, uh, I know that 2020 has been a really rough year for the world, the nation and our community here. I know that, uh, there's been a lot of loss and, um, just here's hoping that, uh, the 2021 is, is better for everybody. And, but it's been, it's been an honor serving with all of you over the past year and working with all of the county department heads and other elected officials and county staff and everybody on this Zoom call and been an honor representing the public on the Monroe County Council this year. So, but let's, uh, I'm looking forward to working for a better 2021 for everybody.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Iverson.
Yeah, I, I wanted to wish everyone a happy holidays as well. And it's already been said that this year's already been a tough one. And it, you know, it got worse. Uh, the, uh, governor's office announced that there was a software error in our positivity rate numbers. And it was actually two to three points worse than we thought it was. So please make plans to not gather over the holiday season. I know it's gonna be hard, but please, uh, observe social distancing, wear a mask and, and do not congregate. It is just the, it's just so dangerous out there. And, uh, we, we will get through this. We will smash this, um, but stay at, stay, pay attention to the Monroe County Health Department. They've got some really great information on Facebook and Twitter and on their website. But in the meantime, happy holidays.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Uh, Mr. Deckard.
I'll be quick. I promised I wouldn't talk a lot tonight, but I will say this. Uh, this week, because there is very little that people can do, and I know some people are so busy and so worried that there's not much they can do, but do that. Uh, but I had a chance to spend some time with my daughters in two of our community parks, one by the county Cars Farm Park, and then the other down in Smithville at their beautiful park. And I tell you what, parks are a place, as long as, you know, you're observing all the, the things that our health department recommend and the instructions of each park, parks are a place that you, we can go when the weather allows. And what a gift that the communities have given over a number of years for those. Two of the best afternoons of, of my recent life and certainly in this 2020. And thank you to the, the community members, the taxpayers that made it possible. Um, as particularly for the three out larges on here, our term, and term we're in starts to come to a close, you kinda get wistful on those things where you see government working, community working, community commitment. So in tough times, thank you so much. Happy holidays.
Thank you, sir. And I just have one, uh, important announcement here for you all. Uh, the State Board of Accounts, uh, will be having the exit conference for the Monroe County uh, GAAP audit for the period, uh, of last year, January 1st, uh, through December 31st, 2019. And that conference will be held Tuesday, uh, December 29th at 11:30 AM. So, uh, all of the county commissioners and our county council members are invited to attend. You don't have to, but, uh, if you would like to, uh, let me know. I believe you all received an invitation to this. If you didn't, let me know. We'll get that out to you so that you can be there, uh, to attend that auditor smith. Uh, we'll be there as well too. So keep me posted if that's something you're interested in. I will, uh, plan on going. And, uh, hope you all have a great holiday. Uh, hope everybody in the community has a great, uh, holiday season. And, uh, again, uh, thanks for all the, the wonderful work from, from you all and from our, uh, county staff and and everybody. It, it was, everybody really pitched in, in 2020. I'll be glad to see 2020 come to an end here. But, uh, it will be a, a year to remember, that's for sure. Uh, Ms. Shell, did you have anything?
Yes, I'm, um, I wanted to say that if a quorum is planning on attending, we need to post for that meeting. So I need to be, um, included if anyone's going to attend, please.
Yeah, is that actually the case for this meeting? La- last year, that was not the case, that they?
Oh, I don't know. I wanted to make sure and then I was gonna run it past Margie, so.
Yeah, do run it past Margie, cause I believe they changed the law to allow counselor, uh, of quorum of counselors and commissioners to attend without it being a public meeting.
Okay, I'll, I'll double check that with Margie.
All right. If there's nothing else, we are adjourned. See you all. Have a good one.
Thank you.
Bye.
Happy holidays.